Good evening, everyone. Tewksbury Zoning Board of Appeals for May twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty one is in session. First item on the agenda, approval of the minutes of April twenty ninth, two thousand and twenty one.
Will we approve the minutes from April twenty nine, twenty one?
Motion has been made. Anyone second?
Nancy, I have to stay and I wasn't here.
Right, no, I second that. Can you hear me?
I can now. Motion is made and seconded all in favor.
Aye.
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 Minutes are approved. Alright, so tonight we're missing two members. Melissa will not be here, so I have to read all the agenda. And Dan's not coming. So, does anyone, um, zoning board members, does anyone have a preference? On cases they want to be on, cases they can't be on, anything? Because I'll just pick who to put on what.
I don't have any preference.
I don't either.
No problems, okay. So the continued hearing, when I call for it, the continued hearing is going to be myself, Nancy, and Mike, I'm going to put you on that because that was Dan. But he's not here tonight, so instead of continuing that again, we'll, uh, we'll put us three on it. So, you know what, just as we go along, I'll say who's on them. Alright, so first continued hearing on the agenda. Harold and Linda McCarthy under Mass General Law, Chapter forty A, Section eight. As a party agreed by a decision made by the building inspector in a letter dated February seventeenth, two thousand and twenty one, said property is located at three twenty five Marshall Street Assessors Map thirty two, Lot three, zoned residential. Uh, Attorney Plunkett.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Um, again, this is a continuation from the last meeting. Uh, online tonight, Harold and Linda McCarthy petitioners. Uh, this Joanne Dela is with the McCarthys, if there's any questions. But at the last meeting, we did a pretty thorough, uh, analysis and review of our submitted letter, the narrative that was submitted with the application. And we had broken it down to three points. I believe the first two points that we left off that everyone was in agreement that there was a determination that there wasn't a violation as concerned by the building inspector relative to the first two points. The third point was left in abeyance and continued to tonight's meeting so that we could address the issue relative to the uh, approval by the DPW concerning water and adequate town water and municipal sanitary sewer. Uh, I had forwarded to, uh, the, uh, admin, uh, Ms. Louder, uh, for submitted to all the board members a copy of the uh, sign off by both the town engineer and the DPW. Uh, which they have indicated that they have approved the sewer and the water permit for the site on the building permit request. So that was sent over to the, uh, planning office and the request is made to forward it to all members of the, uh, of the ZBA. So hopefully, Mr. Chairman, that has reached all the board members. And I think with that, we have addressed the final issue, uh, relative to, you know, whether there is adequate water and sewer. And we have the appropriate sign off by engineering and DPW. And therefore, I think that we're set for a final determination by the board.
Alright, uh, we do have that paper in our packets. It's board members, it's the only paper that came for this agenda item in the new packet, okay? Um, any board members have questions? I don't have any. That's, that's what I was stuck on is that, um.
Yeah, I don't have any either.
None at all.
Alright, um, you know, let me get this number. So if anyone would like to call in for this item. Uh, the number is seven eight one, five six five, eight one three four. Again, seven eight one, five six five, eight one three four, and that's for anyone who wants to call in. Um, anything else, Attorney Plunkett?
Uh, just as a recap, Mr. Chairman, I, I, you know, believe, um, as per the last discussion at the last meeting, the, um, McCarthy's party agreed by the determination of the building commissioner. And that we have proven, uh, that we have submitted sufficient information to the board. Uh, that the board is in the position to reverse the commissioner's determination. And then now their, uh, decision will allow the building permit to be issued.
Okay, anything else, board members?
Nope.
Nothing for me.
Alright, if somebody'd like to make a motion to, nope, I'm sorry. Being in public here, we have to open it to the public at this time. If there's anyone that would like to call, seven eight one, five six five, eight one three four. If they have any comments, concerns. Uh, we'll give that a minute. See if anyone calls in on it. Is there anyone on the line for this one, Jason?
No callers for this item, Mr. Chairman.
Alright, so let's give it a minute or two, see if anyone calls in and, uh, we'll close both pots in the hearing. Alright, I'm sure if anyone had a comment, they would have been on the line already.
Mm-hmm.
Nothing, Jason?
Still no callers.
Alright, if somebody'd like to make a motion to close both pots in the hearing.
I'd like to make a motion to close both parts of the hearing for Harold and Linda McCarthy under Mass General Laws.
Motion has been made.
Second.
Motion made, close both pots and seconded all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, any discussion?
No.
I don't have any.
Alright, somebody, now, this one being, hold on, I got too many agendas in front of me. Alright, so this one being a party aggrieved, we always make the motion in the affirmative. So it would be. It would, oh, I can't think of the word. It would be a motion for an approval for the party aggrieved, and then if we disagree with it, we would vote no. Everyone understand that? We always, we always make the motion in the affirmative. So if somebody'd like to make that motion.
I'd like to make a motion to agree.
Go to proof.
To approve.
Yep.
Harold and Linda McCarthy under Mass General Laws, Chapter forty A, Section eight, as a party, as party aggrieved by discussion, by dis- decision made by the building inspector in letter dated February seventeenth, two thousand and twenty one. Said property is located at three twenty five Marshall Street Assessors Map thirty two, Lot three, zoned residential. It's continued from four twenty nine.
Alright, so now, the motion you just made is to uphold the building inspector's decision.
Mm-hmm.
So if we want to let them build, then we, uh, vote no. If we agree with the building inspector, we vote yes. Is that clear?
Yeah.
Alright, so motion has been made. I need a second.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Seeing one.
Aye.
Okay, seeing two. Opposed? Myself, nay. Okay, so the motion will pass. You can build it. Okay?
Alright, uh, again, I, it's kind of a nuance. So as I understand it, we were allowed to get the building permit and continue with the.
Yes, we, we always vote, we always make our motions in the affirmative, so if we make a motion affirmative, we're standing with the building inspector. I voted nay, so you're all set.
Okay. Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you. Alright, so the next item on the, thank you, good luck. So the next item on the agenda will be myself, Ray, and Mike. Okay? Alright, next item on the agenda is.
Yeah. Who's that?
Rochelle and Naylin Sayon. I am sorry about that. Alright, who's, who's got to hit mute? Thank you.
Meeting.
From a variance from Section forty one twenty. For change of lot of the Tewksbury zoning bylaws to facilitate the conveyance of land upon which a single family dwelling will be built. As shown on plans filed with this board, said property is located at four hundred and forty four North Bill Ricker Road slash two hundred and forty seven High Street, Bill Ricker, Assessors Map two, Lot twelve, zoned residential. And who do we have for this one?
I think they just dropped.
Terry Bedeira, yeah.
Are you here for this?
I'm here for the, uh, the four forty four North Bill Ricker Road.
Yes.
Yes. It's quite, um, for the record, my name's George Maderas, I represent the, uh, applicant, uh, petitioners on this matter. Um, I'm not sure, do we have a majority of the board here? I'm not, I just can't tell by looking at my Zoom screen who's.
Yes, you do.
Uh, because I don't know if I do after I get a, is this a five-member board or is that what this is? I can't, I get, I lost my audio, I can't hear.
And you didn't.
I can hear you.
No, you didn't lose the audio, I forgot to hit unmute. Uh, yeah, we're a five-member board, you got four members here tonight.
So I need a clean, clean sweep to get a variance, is that correct? Is that my interpretation?
Yep, three members make a quorum.
Mm-hmm.
But I need, I need to get a variance, I need four, four out of four, like four out of five normally.
Uh, three voting would be enough for you.
Alright. Yeah, alright, for the, uh, like I said, my name's George Maderas, I represent the petitioners on this matter. Um, just to give a little bit of background, I don't know if the, what, I could probably, I don't know, I'm just as put off by this, uh, video meeting as anyone else, I guess, and kind of old school. I don't know if I could share my screen so I could see the, the, uh, plan, so I could guide the board through the, uh, through it, or.
Yeah, you can, um, you can share your screen.
I can try, I guess, what's, how's that sound?
Jason, can you help him?
Yeah, I just made him a presenter, so down below, there should be a share button in the interface.
Can the board member see that screen?
Once you share it, we should be able to.
Oh, I guess. I'm trying to.
Well, the good thing is, next month, we'll be back at Town Hall.
Alright, I'm pressing the share screen, help me through this, I guess. Which one would I be pressing after that?
Uh, it should be, should be an option for your desktop. There we go. It's coming through now.
That it? Can the board see, can the board see that screen now?
Yeah, keep in mind, everything, everything that's on your screen is on TV right now, so.
Alright, because, you know, so the board can see my, this plan, is that correct?
Well, we can see, no.
I don't think we're far open, yeah.
You have to click, you have to open up the application, open it up.
Aye, aye.
Go, go where, where you have PDF on it, click on where it says PDF, click there, go all the way over to the left.
Alright.
Right. Click on, okay.
I'm just not.
Downward says, scroll down where it says B. Tewksbury Plan, I think I can see in your PDF. Open that up.
And I can see it on my screen, so I don't know why you can't see.
You got to double-click on it, Russ.
Where am I double-clicking?
If you go back to the share button, you're sharing a, uh, a, one of your windows, so you have to share the document, the window that has the document open.
Okay, I think I'm gonna feel, I'm gonna, I anticipating I'm gonna fail on this.
Yeah, I mean, sorry to jump in, but if you want to minimize the window, maybe it's down below.
I'm seeing Window Explorer, yeah, will that share it? Is it sharing right now? I guess I can't.
Yeah, we see, we just see the Windows Explorer window, so can you double-click that, um, Tewksbury Plan file?
I, it's on my screen, so I don't know what's, what to tell you.
Okay, at the bottom of your screen, there's a share button. If you click that up, there'll be a number of little icons in there. One of them should say Adobe. If you click on that, it should show.
I say, on the top of my screen, I get a share button, it says share content. Would that be what I've been pressing?
Sure, okay, it's a different location, yeah. And then it should give you options of what you want to share.
I want to share my. Um, I'm sorry, I, I'm gonna have to speak to the plan because I, I, I don't seem to be familiar.
We have, we all, we all have copies of the plan.
Alright. Well.
If you could, if you could click the stop sharing option.
Yeah. Alright. Alright.
Alright, before you, before you go on.
Alright.
Try it again one more time. See if you can get that screen that you want. Click, click the share button.
Yes.
Click on the, the file that you want to share. Just try it one more time. We'll wait.
I got a Window Explorer.
Alright, you're starting to share. Now that screen right there.
Yes.
Can you minimize that screen? Because it looks like what you're trying to share is underneath it. Yep, minimize that.
Okay.
Or even close it.
No, that's the document you want, right?
Alright, I want to see this Tewksbury.
Like, if you double-click it open, does it open?
Yeah, and I, I can see it.
Because what you did, what you did is you opened only the Explorer version. What you need to share is full screen. And not just the actual document.
Right, but what's behind it? Isn't that the document behind it, the way we're looking at it?
Hmm, I don't think so.
Close. Go back up to your X there.
Can you?
Yep, there you go. Alright, tell us, tell us about it.
Alright. I say, um, what we have here is the, is a parcel property that's on High Street in Bull Ricker. It's also in, the frontage is entirely in High Street in Bull Ricker. The plan is divided by the Tewksbury-Bull Ricker line. So portion of the property is in Tewksbury, portion of the property is in Bull Ricker. Yeah, actually, there is a existing house there where the, uh, applicant lives at four forty, uh, north, it's called North Bull Ricker Road. I'm not too sure why because of the fact that all the frontages is in on High Street. But half that property, half that dwelling is not half, but half, say half, it's half is in Bull Ricker and half is in Tewksbury. The property is sort of a U shape. It has a hundred and thirty feet of frontage north of the Town of Bull Ricker Cemetery. And then there's another hundred and fifty feet of frontage south of the Town of Bull Ricker Cemetery. What the applicant has proposed to do is divide the property in two so that is twenty seven, it is, right now, it's a fifty-four thousand square per parcel. So there'll be two parcels, one, each parcel would have twenty-seven thousand square feet. And the parcel in Bull Ricker, we've already gone before the Board of Appeals in Bull Ricker and been granted a variance to construct a house strictly in, on the Bull Ricker, in Bull Ricker, on the, uh, would be the Lot B on your plan. And Lot A would remain as the, uh, in, in, as it exists now. The plan has been taken before the Planning Board of, uh, the Town of Tewksbury and has been endorsed as approval not required. We've gone before the Planning Board of the Town of Bull Ricker. They planned, they approved it under subdivision control law, and that plan has been recorded. The issue before the board is, because we are going to be changing the size of the lot. However, we're not looking for a building permit for Tewksbury, but we still are going to be diminishing the size of the lot, so and to make sure that this remaining house isn't considered a legally existing or not in violation. We need a variance to change the size of the lot under your Section, uh, twenty-one, I'm sorry, forty-one twenty. Basic principle of why we want that is we don't want the house to be considered not in violation of, is it considered to be in violation of zoning? Because we have some concern, if anything ever happened to the house, some shop, law, uh, insurance agency, our insurance company would say, well, we don't have to cover that, that house because it was in violation of zoning when we subdivided. Reason why my client is looking for this, uh, to provide the property is presently, I don't, hopefully the board members had a chance to go out there and look at the lot. Because of the Town of Bull Ricker's cemeteries and projects into this property, it makes the southern portion of the property look like it's totally separate from the current owner, and it appears to be almost like a vacant piece of land. This is, you know, attracts people that, you know, put trash there, if there's no grams there, they could see these piles of trash have been dumped over the years. This Town of, uh, Bull Ricker Cemetery, all the plackets have been actually violated and removed over the years. The only one that's remaining is the one for Rogers that marks the actual tomb. All the other plackets have been gone. The Town of Bull Ricker does mow that cemetery. There was, I think there was an agreement from the board, from the zoning board of Town of Bull Ricker, that there'll be more security actually for that cemetery, if there was actually a house beside. Just to discourage people from trying to throw trash as they go by, or dump trash on the property. It's just a, um, just too hard for my clients, really hardship for my client to maintain it. And so that's why we're looking for it. I know this board has a, like a three-prong test to make sure that we, uh, are entitled to a variance. We think we can satisfy that three-prong test because of the hardship that exists of him trying to maintain and police this property. It would be off, certainly in the public interest, that there is a second house that's constructed there. That would be, uh, act as additional security for the neighborhood. And it really went to de- degrade from the intent of the, uh, zoning bylaw because the spacing of the houses would be in compliance. The house that's going to exist there will be two hundred feet away, the house on the right-hand side, that would also be two hundred feet away. The house behind it would be over three hundred and twenty-five feet away. Um, we did put on the plan at the back of Lot B that there'll be a twenty-foot no-cut tree border. We wanted to be good neighbors and so that we make sure that we, there are some mature trees back there. Not a lot, this brush has been cut down, but there are some mature trees back there. Which ensure privacy for the existing homes that are, uh, behind the property. And, um, I think that's about it for side of the board, so I think we satisfied the three-prong test. It's, it's really a question, we want to make sure that all eyes are dotted and fees across. So that we are in compliance with the, uh, Tewksbury zoning bylaws to change the size of the lot.
Let me ask you a question. You said you went to the Planning Board and got a, a subdivision approval. Which Planning Board, Tewksbury or Bill Ricker?
I went to both.
And they both approved?
They, they both were approved, and if I call it my plan, I would, I don't know if I follow that, but I can, that's one of the plans I could show you. But it, it, the, there was an endorsement, I actually had two endorsements, uh, blocks for the plan. One was for the Planning Board from the Town of Tewksbury. That was, we went to that meeting, and they said Planning Board, uh, approval was not required. And so it was endorsed as an NRA, uh, plan. And, uh, there was a second block for the, that same plan was taken to the Town of Bull Ricker for approval under subdivision control law. We had a little bit of different interpretations between the two towns. They also endorsed it. So the plan's been basically endorsed by both the Planning Board of Bull Ricker and the Planning Board of Tewksbury, and that plan has been recorded.
Okay, and on your proposed Lot A?
Yes.
Number, number four hundred and forty-four, is that the existing house that's there now?
That's the existing house that's there.
You, on this plan, there's no proposed buildings, you're just.
No, no, on the plan that shows, on Lot A, it says a proposed building envelope. You read, you, we, usually the way we handle it in Bull Ricker is, we don't usually show the house on the plan because then you better come in right on the numbers. If you don't, then you're going to go back and work. So anywhere within that envelope, the house can be built. So that's how we don't do it, and so as long as we're thirty-five feet back from the street, fifteen feet from each side boundary, this, there, there, anywhere in that, that envelope, there could be a house built. It's not gonna, it's not gonna fill up the whole envelope, obviously, because that'll be.
No, I, I, I understand what you're trying to do here, because about half of that, even more than half of Lot A is in Tewksbury.
Yep.
Is. So the house address is Tewksbury or Bill Ricker?
The new lot would be Bull Ricker. It actually has a number that's been assigned to it, two forty-seven High Street. Will be the new number for Lot B.
Yep.
Lot A, the existing house number, uh, address for that house is four forty-four North Bull Ricker Road, Tewksbury. I don't know how it came to have that as an address, because like I say, it's frontage is all on High Street. And so why was assigned to a, um, a Tewksbury address, I'm not too certain. I believe they get the surge, the service for four forty-four surges by Tewksbury. And so there might have been some type of, uh, technicality where they can, I believe there is some type of case law, if your house is in Bull, in two towns, you're entitled to the services of both communities, and so that's only, and I'm really guessing, you know, why it ended up with that house address.
Okay, so if on Lot A?
Yeah.
The house that was, are, are you, are you thinking about putting another house on that lot, or just selling off the other piece?
We're gonna keep that house, that house is a really good, really well-maintained, in good condition inside, at four forty-four.
Okay.
So, but just as another point, that house at four forty-four was built in nineteen fifty. It was on a lot that was like, uh, fourteen thou, I mean, you could see if the existing area was fourteen thousand eight hundred and seventy-six square feet. That was, just that was, lot was separate. They also had a separate lot, uh, fifteen thousand square, square feet on where the Lot B is located. At some point in time, the lots were joined together by a non-built of the lot when they carved out the subdivision behind it. And they sort of shot themselves in the foot by doing that, because now they linked all the land together. And so any grandfather status possibilities of having two houses there was lost by linking them together. I felt that the house on Lot A where it was built in nineteen fifty was considered a previously non-existent, uh, conforming lot. And therefore, any issues regarding it being rebuilt, we would protect it as a grandfather lot in that status. The, um, the building inspector feels that once it's all became one parcel, that now it's become conforming, and so now you're going to go back and get a variance to diminish its size.
And you're looking for a variance on the forty-one twenty, just for the, the acre lot? Right?
Lot eighty lot, right, 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 exactly, so it won't be an acre, it won't be an acre lot. It'd only have a hundred and thirty feet of frontage. Versus where the new lot has a hundred and fifty three frontage and has been granted a variance of a little bit of frontage in areas. So it's, it's, it's a little bit of a unique situation, obviously, because of the fact that it's a U-shaped lot, it's in two different towns. You're, you're trying to comply with the zoning requirements of two different towns at the same time. And this has been, you know, this has been a long process because of that. But it seems to be like the final, this is, like I said, the final board and the final issue is to make sure that the house is never, is it going to be construed as being in violation of Tewksbury's own bylaws.
So technically, the Town of Bill Ricker Cemetery is in Tewksbury?
No, that's Bull, no, that's Bull Ricker, that's Bull Ricker, Town of Tewksbury, that's Bull Ricker. The Tewksbury Lang is behind it. So the front part, the front part of the lot, you can see down the middle of the property, so it's Town, um, Bull Ricker.
So your, your house at four forty-four, that technically is in Tewksbury?
Uh, back part, the back part, the front, the front of the lot is still in Bull Ricker.
You have a Tewksbury address.
Right, but it has a Tewksbury.
So if you have a Tewksbury address, Lot A, I would consider a Tewksbury lot. I know it's half and half, but, but it's got a Tewksbury address.
Right.
And before your dividing line, you've got the Town of Bill Ricker Cemetery. Which would lead you to, it's just kind of odd.
Yep, but the Town of Bull Ricker is in Bull, the Town of Bull Ricker Cemetery is in Bull Ricker. It might be the back, very back tippety corner. Looks like this slightly extends into Tewksbury. The whole rest of the cemetery seems to be in Bull. And I'm sure that's the reason why is I'm saying you get, they used to measure, you know, things back then with a chain, ten-foot chain stretching into the woods, now they have scopes and stuff, and they pick up a slide, far as like.
So when this was one lot, right, when this was one lot, or it still is one lot, you, you did not have continuous frontage on this lot?
That's correct. That's correct. There's a hundred and thirty feet, right now, there's a hundred and thirty feet in, uh, on High Street. Uh, north of the cemetery, then there's, uh, frontage of a hundred and fifty feet south of Tewksbury. If you go from the north end of this, uh, lot on High Street to the south end, it's three hundred and eighty-five feet. Because the cemetery's in between.
Right.
That's.
So how did they even calculate frontage on it?
Because the lot does have frontage on it. I'm saying they, the frontage is, there's a hundred and thirty feet north of the cemetery, and then there's a hundred and fifty feet south of the cemetery.
Right, but frontage should be continuous.
Well, there's a, it's not continuous because of the fact that the cemetery's in between.
It's, it's bizarre. It's, it's a bizarre situation.
And that's what's, that is, and that really leads directly to his hardship, because of the fact that it looks like, well, you got a house up there north of the cemetery, and then there's nothing south of the cemetery.
Right.
But it's actually the same lot. It's like a big U.
Right. It's bizarre. Uh, any questions, board members?
Nope.
Who else is on this? Ray?
No questions. I thought the, uh, description, uh, was, uh, well done in the packet.
Thank you.
Even without the shared screen?
I wish I could. I have all the, all the things in the packet. I have all the diagrams and everything. So I was able to follow along pretty easily.
Well, thank you. We can, I, I can blare you. I can hardly wait to have him first in these back again because I'm surprised. Actually, I've been practicing in Borica for 39 years. And this is the first opportunity I've had to practice before the board, up here before the order to experience. Um, and I kind of actually surprised myself when I first saw that. And of course, this is probably the worst scenario grounds for trying to do it. I guess the technology, I'm an old attorney and I feel like the technology's going faster than I can keep up with.
What's the zoning requirements in Bill Ricker?
The zoning requirement is actually 50,000 square feet. It's, and 200 feet of frontage. They've got variance to bring it down to 150 feet and to 27,000 square feet of area. But we will meet the set, we will meet the setbacks. We'll meet the height requirements.
They want 200 feet of frontage? Oh. And over, what's that, an acre and a quarter?
A $50 value acre and a quarter. So I see it is quite large there. They, they seem like they do, uh, sorry, because if you look at the a little bit further on to the right side, it shows there's an existing easement there. That's on the lot next door. That also gives it more privacy. So it seems like that this lot is surrounded by things that isolated. And therefore, that, you know, that we're not violating the tent of the zoning by law because it seems like it's isolated already.
Right. Yeah, it's a, it's an interesting parcel, that's for sure.
Well, this was, it seemed like a law school exam question.
Right. All right. Uh, nothing from the board members?
Nothing.
All right. So being a public hearing, we'll open it to the public at this time. Phone number is 781-565-8134. And do we have any callers?
Mr. Caller, uh, Mr. Chairman, I do have a caller for this item.
Well, go ahead, call him. Give us your name and your address, please.
She might be muted. She could be watching it on the TV. Let's give it a few seconds here. Okay, I do have her on the line.
Go ahead, call her, please. If you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Um, Kathy Anderson, 61 Hightech Drive, Tewksbury.
Right, Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
What would you like to say?
Uh, Kathy Anderson, 61 Hightech Drive.
Okay, then, go, go ahead.
Um, we were listening and we were, just had a question. Um, we were wondering if anything was, is going to be changing from the planning of board approval from the town of Borica?
I can answer that question. There's no change in the plan. Sort of why I wanted to show it. But this is the same plan that went through the, out of the planning board. It shows the 20, it does show the 20-foot, um, no-cut tree zone at the back of the lot. The same dimension. It's just like, say, we, um, uh, Mrs. Anderson, who was at the other means, and just to show that it is exactly the same plan, it's the same plan that's been recorded. It's just like, say, to bring us in compliance with the, yeah, Tewksbury bylaws to reduce the houses area. The lot around the house.
Okay, so the 20-foot, uh, no-cut border will still be there for, uh, behind proposed lot B?
That's correct.
That is, that is on the plan that they're proposing to us.
Uh, that's all that we wanted to make sure.
Okay, very good. Thank you for calling.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
No other calls, Mr. Chairman.
All right, um. Anything else you'd like to say, Attorney Manderas?
No, I, I hopefully I was able, with the circumstances, project what was going on.
Okay. Anything else, board members?
I have nothing.
All right. Ray, you're on this one.
Yeah.
Nothing?
Nothing.
All right. If somebody'd like to make a motion to close both parts of the hearing?
Make a motion to close both parts of the hearing?
Motion's been made.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Thanks.
Any discussion? I think it's very unique. And it's a very unique situation where it's half in Tewksbury, half in Bill Ricker. Cemetery in the middle of it. It's just, uh.
Yeah, the shape of the lot because of the cemetery makes it, uh, I, I, I think it, it makes sense to, um, provide this relief.
All right. If somebody'd like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Sure.
To grant the variance from, uh, section 4120 for change of lot of the, by the Tewksbury zoning bylaw to facilitate the conveyance of land upon which a single-family dwelling will be built on the plans filled with the board. Said property is located at 444 North Borica Road slash 27 High Street, Borica. Assesses map to lot 12 Zone Residential.
Motion's been made. I'm looking for a second.
Second.
And second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous vote. Hey, you're all set, Attorney Manderas?
All right, thank you very much.
Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So. Nancy, you want to share the next one?
No.
Okay. So, me, Nancy. And Ray, why don't you do another one? So this one will be me, Nancy and Ray. Sound good? Someone say yes?
I said yeah.
Next item on the agenda, Lakeside Mobile Home Court, Inc., care of Paul Legro. Under Mass General Law Chapter 48, Section 8, as a party aggrieved by a decision made by the building inspector in a letter dated April 5th, 2021, and a special permit under Section 3651 to allow for the reconstruction, extension, alteration, or change of a non-conforming structure to install four replacement mobile homes as shown on plans filed with this board. Said property includes 8 Berkeley Street, 20 Upton Street, 120, uh, Lycaster, I didn't say that right, Street, and 124. How do I say that? Leechestah?
Lychester.
Lychester, I said it right. Assesses map 17, lots 11 and 13, Zone Residential. And who do we have for this one?
Uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Matthew Kavanaugh. I'm the attorney for Lakeside. The president, Paul Legro of Lakeside is here as well.
Good morning, sir. Let me find your application here and all these papers. I'll be happy when we go to, uh.
In person.
Live meetings again.
Mm-hmm.
Get a bigger table.
Much.
All right, Mr. Kavanaugh, tell us a little about what you're doing, please.
Yes. Well, basically what we're trying to do is to replace four mobile homes that were moved from the sites because they were, uh, no longer viable and our insurance company asked us to move, you know, take them off as potential liability, uh, issues. And we, in all, you know, times intended, replace those with new homes. And when we actually, um, got to do it, the, the factories that make mobile homes were closed down during COVID for a period of time. And now they're, you know, very far from doing it, lack of materials and whatnot. Um, we went to the building inspector and she provided us with the letter that's in front of you tonight that were, um, appealing. And basically this, uh, this, so this letter we've got, you know, our response is she's treating them as a non-conforming uses, but as you see in the pack, in 1951, variance by this board granted to the owner, uh, the ability to have a park. But they referred to trailer park then, which the refer today as manufactured home communities. And then in 1983, this board allowed them to expand the park. So it's our position that it's allowed use, but by the zoning by law has varied by those variances, not a non-conforming, uh, a pre-existing non-conforming use. Um, so the, in, in that case, the abandonment would not really be an issue. Um, and then in the alternative, uh, we were asking the board for a special permit. The board finds that it is a pre-existing non-conforming use. Um, would suggest that it was not abandoned. And I did, you know, submit some case law so that mere non-use doesn't rise to level of abandonment. There's got to be an intention of abandon and some action. In this case, there was never any intention to ban the, and certainly, when you, when you look at the issues, you really look at those to the park is, park has always been around for 70 years. It's always been used in mobile home park. These particular sites at the park, um, the homes moved from the park itself, uh, still up there. No intention of abandonment. And so I just, uh, think that that the building inspector's analysis in this instance, didn't take into account the fact that there was a variance that um, allowed the park first to be originated and then to be banned. But if, if the court finds that it is pre-existing, would ask for a permit, uh, which would allow us to replace those homes. And the, where this, this board has done this with other homes at the park. And so that's our alternative decision. I don't know if you want to go any further on that.
I, I, I have a couple of questions. So the trailers, the, the mobile homes were removed April 11th, 2018?
That's correct. Yes.
Because your insurance company thought they were a liability?
Correct.
So they were obviously in, in disrepair.
That's correct.
Who owns the mobile homes?
Well, usually, in this instance, I'll have to ask park management. Usually what happens is when they get to that point, um, the owners of the homes are separate individuals. They typically will convey title to us so that they don't have to pay the cost of removing the home. Because that's a, you know, it's a costly process. And so that's what usually happens. So we incur the cost of actually, you know, removing them.
And who's going to own? Do you have an owner that wants to move a new mobile home onto these sites or do you buy them?
Um, Jeff, what happens is the owner buys them and sells them to, you know, someone who's going to occupy, be an owner occupant.
Okay. So the owner of the park paid to have the old trailers removed in 2018?
Correct.
You, you had trouble getting, with all intentions of bringing new ones right in?
Yes.
Couldn't get them because of COVID?
Yes.
And now we're being told that it's, um, not a permissible use on that site?
Yes. Well, she's saying that the, the building inspectors indicate that it's an abandonment use. And I don't think that it rises to that level. If it, if it does apply, and I don't think it does, because it was, you know, it was. Uh, we've never, our intent to abandon those sites.
Right. So if this was in the days of COVID, it would, would have been a couple of, maybe a couple of months, and the new ones would have been rolling in.
Yes, it would have been rolling in and we would have been able to sell them fairly quick.
All right. And how big were the original ones?
Um, there's a, let me look at that. So 8 Berkeley was 12 by 60. 22 Upton was 12 by 48. 120 Lychester was 12 by 60. And 124 Lychester was 14 by 66.
And you know how big the, the ones that are coming in are?
The new homes are, the minimum width is 14 feet. So they're all 14 feet. And then the industry standard is 70 feet. So we've got, I think all of them are 70 feet. Um, there may be one that's 66 feet because of the size of the sites a little bit small.
So 14 by 70 as opposed to 12 by, a couple of 12 by 60 is a 12 by 48 and a 14 by 66?
Correct.
But that's the industry standard now?
Yes.
So even, do these lots even have setbacks?
Well, they, see, the, the lot is actually the entire park.
Right.
Um, and, and these particular sites are, are not really lots. They're just sites at the park. They're, they've been fixed for a long time because, um, people have, you know, when they were first set up, we haven't changed the site. We've used the same site year after year, but um, when she's referring to a lot, if, if this site is not a lot, it's the entire park that's the lot. And that certainly hasn't been abandoned. And certainly there's no intent to abandon it. So I think that, um, you know, the building inspector sort of, was, didn't correctly refer to a lot.
Okay. I, I understand. Uh, board members, any questions?
I don't have any.
All right, um. Shall we open it to the public?
Yeah.
Being a public hearing, we'll open it to the public if, at this time, if there's anyone on the phone.
We have no calls, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I'm just reading 3651. So I'll read it together. She's calling it a non-conforming nature.
I think that's because they're changing the size in the, in the, uh, the mobile or the, the, what's the term now? Is it mobile home still? Um, the, uh, size is now, uh, 14 feet. Um, and I believe they said industries, industry, industry standard, but that's really the, it's a HUD requirement. Is that true?
That's correct.
So is it, I mean, is it really a non-conforming structure to begin with?
I would say it's not, but was, there was no restriction on the size of the structures in either the 1951 variance or the 1983 variance. We, I think what was used was the industry standard back then was a little bit smaller.
Basically, you went from 720 to 980, so 100. One and a half square foot.
I can see where they used it because of the change in size, but it's.
I don't think the difference is that big too. Personally.
Wish we had the old zoning bylaws. The, uh, the Tewksbury Board of Appeals, there weren't even the zoning board of appeals in, I just read it, 1983?
Yes.
They issued a variance from the requirements of section 4, paragraph 6H13 of the zoning bylaw. Be nice to know what that was.
Uh, yeah.
Been around a while, but not that long.
So if you, uh, if you look at the last page of that, well, the second to last page of that. It says. It says that, you know, additional trailer park sites located on Shoreline Drive or met assessive map seventeen lot seventy-nine premises located in a general residence district. So I assume that was the, the variance, uh, revealed at that time.
Yeah. All right, um, anything else, Board members?
I don't have anything.
Nothing for me.
Anything else, Mr. Kavanaugh?
No, sir.
All right, and, and we still have no callers?
No callers, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, if, uh, somebody'd like to make a motion to close both parts of the hearing?
Make a motion to close both parts of the hearing?
My second.
Motion's made in second all favor. Aye. Any discussion?
Yeah.
I don't have anything personally.
Nothing?
Nothing for me.
All right. I personally, I, I don't know if this is an abandonment. You know, any other time you leave something sitting for two years, yes. But we've been on COVID for a year and a half.
I, I think it would, I would be hard pressed to argue abandonment due to the nature of the last year.
And the lot is not abandoned if it's lived in already, because that's one big lot.
Right. All right, so if somebody'd like to make a motion. Now this, what we're gonna have to do here is, um, we got two things, we got section thirty-six fifty-one and we've got the party aggrieved. So.
Which one do you want to start with?
I think we should do the party aggrieved first.
All right, so, okay, I'll stop at the, the letter dated April twenty-one then.
Mm-hmm.
So make a motion to approve Lakeside Mobile Home Court Incorporated care of Paul Legro under Mass General Laws, Chapter forty-eight, Section A, as a party agreed by a decision made by the building inspector in a letter dated April fifth, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made in second. Now, before I call for a vote, keep in mind that if you vote yes, you're voting in favor of the building commissioner. You're agreeing with the building commissioner. You vote no, you're voting with the applicant. Okay? All right, so motion's been made in second, all in favor?
All right.
What, did I get an eye there? Did I get one eye or no eyes? Okay.
No eyes.
All in favor is none, opposed, nay.
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 Three nays. All right, so you're good on that one. All right.
So we're in second part now?
Yes, please.
Make a motion to approve a special permit under section thirty-six fifty-one to allow for the reconstruction, extension, alteration, or change of a non-conforming structure to install four replacement mobile homes as shown on the plans filed with the board. Said property includes eight Berkeley Street, twenty-two Upton Street, one twenty Leicester Street, and one twenty-four Leicester Street, assessors map seventeen, lots seventeen and thirteen zone residential.
Motion's been made.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous vote on that one. All right, Mr. Kavanaugh, you're all set.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you members of the board.
Good luck to you. All right, um, I need a break. I need a quick, I need a quick five minute one.
All right, I'm with you.
All right, so we'll do a recess, we'll do, uh, let's do ten minutes.
Okay.
And a real ten minutes. All right, we're in recess.
Thank you.
Rob, I think you're on mute.
I was talking to my kids, that's why I'm on mute. They hide over there. There they go. Alright, everybody ready? We back?
Back.
Alright, so who's gonna be on this one? Me? Who wants to be on the last one? Nancy, you want to cheer? I'm sorry, you're on mute. I think you said yes. No? I guess no. Alright.
No, this one's a different one for me. I don't want to cheer this one.
Alright, good excuse. Who wants to be on it?
I won't, yeah.
There you go. Mike?
And I'll be on it too.
And Nancy. Okay, good. Alright, next item on the agenda. Janice S. Harum, heir of Paul K. LeBurne, deceased. For a variance from Section 4120 and Section 4130, Appendix B, for minimum lot size of the Tuxbury zoning bylaws to facilitate the separation and sale of two individual lots. As shown on plans filed at this board, said property is located at 1176 South Street, Rounsville Road. Assessors map 109, Lot 53 and 54, Zoned Residential. And who's here for this one?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Attorney William Graemer for Janice Harmon. And I believe she is the call-in user number three. Jan, can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay, so she's here.
Alright. Janice, if you could just give state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Janice Harmon, J-A-R-M-U-N. My current address is 1176 South Street in Tuxbury, LA.
Alright, thank you. Tell us a little bit about what you're doing, please.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, everyone. The issue before the court or before the board this evening is a request for a variance in order to sell, divide, sell as separate lots, 1176 South Street and a vacant lot at Rounsville Road. If I share my screen, I'd like to just walk through the...
Yes, please. Go ahead.
See if we can do it. There we go. Just by way of a little bit of background. Mrs. Harmon inherited both parcels from Mr. Paul LeBrun, who died in December of 2019. She is Mr. LeBrun's cousin. She was the executor of his estate and his sole heir. After acquiring the properties through the inheritance, she decided to try to sell them. And this issue of merger came up, which is a zoning doctrine that says when issues are, when two lots are owned in common, they are merged for purposes of zoning. The 1176 South Street lot by itself, and at the time it was created, was a lawful 10,000 square foot lot. It was created prior to the one acre zoning bylaw and it has remained as a lawful, pre-existing, non-conforming lot since that time. The Rounsville Road lot was created subsequently as part of a larger subdivision of land off of Rounsville Road. And that lot by itself is a conforming lot to today's standards. It's at least one acre and has 100, in excess of 150 feet of frontage along Rounsville Road. The Exhibit A in the packet is on the screen and I've just highlighted 1176 South Street. You can see this lot here. Is the 10,000 square foot lot. It's similar in nature to the many other lots that lie along South Street. I'll scroll down. The next map is the same map, but just highlighted the larger vacant lot on Rounsville Road. And again, this one acre lot is similar in nature to the other lots within that subdivision. So the uniqueness of this is that 1176 is in the unfortunate position of being adjacent to the Rounsville Road lot, which each of them is part of their own neighborhood, so to speak. The 1176 is consistent with the lots up and down South Street, in that particular area of South Street. But for the merger doctrine, these lots could be sold as separate lots. The... This map here shows you the Morningside Park subdivision. This is when South Street was created. Lot 18, zoom in a little bit. Lot 18 is now 1176 South Street.
Could you go, could you go full screen on your, on your share there? Is that possible?
Does that work?
That's better. It was better for a second. Yeah, it's a little better. Yeah, there you go. Zoom up on that one. Alright, go ahead.
So this is a plan showing at the time that the 1176 South Street lot was created. South Street runs along here on the right side. Lot 18 is now what's 1176. And you can see back then, they actually had created 1,000 square foot lots all the way into what was then called Morningside Drive. It's now Rounsville Road. All these lots, 15, 14, 13, 12, etc., those are, those don't exist. Those are all now part of the Rounsville, Rounsville Road subdivision.
What? What's the date on this one? It's just too small, I can't read it.
Yep. This is...
54.
December 1954.
54, okay.
It was recorded in February 1956. With the registry deeds approved October 1955. And the one acre zoning went into effect in October of 1956, the following year. So this is a law, this is a lawful, pre-existing 10,000 square foot lot. And obviously, there's an existing single-family home on that lot.
One was, one was the other lot? The Roosevelt Road lot?
Yep, so that one. Scroll down.
Two years later.
It was in 1967. So you can see here, this is the plan that created the Rounsville Road, or one of the plans for the subdivision. Sorry, it's jumping around on me. Sorry about that. That plan was recorded in September 1967. There was an earlier one in June of 1967. And the LeBrun family acquired that parcel from the developer, C.R. Trewick &amp; Sons, in November of 1967.
And nothing was ever built on it?
Nothing was ever built on it. It remains vacant to this day. Mr. LeBrun inherited both lots from his parents. In, in the packet that I submitted, I've given you the chain of title. He came into himself common ownership as of 2011. And he continued to live at 1176 South Street until his death in 2019. My client initially requested a zoning determination from the building commissioner, asking that she find that the merger doctrine did not apply. There is some case law which suggests that if you can demonstrate that the lots have maintained their separate identities, that you, there may be an exception to the merger doctrine. The court, following what I would call a favorable decision on that subject, the court issued a subsequent decision, which basically said, "We take no position." So they've sort of left that issue in limbo. We argued that these two lots do have separate identities. There are separate tax bills. I've submitted in the packet, the assessor's record. It shows that the Rounsville Road lot is actually assessed as a vacant buildable lot with a property class code of 1300, which is under the code classification book. One is vacant land, the three stands for developable land. Two would be undevelopable. So the town has this assessed at 219,000. It's a vacant buildable lot. Taxes have been paid on that value. Or I should say, as a buildable lot value over time. The two lots have never been conveyed in a single deed. They were acquired by separate deeds. And that's another indication that they've maintained their separate identities. And the, the use of Lot 1176 has remained confined to its lot. There's been no spillover of structures or other use of the owner of Lot 1176 into, you could say, the rounds, Rounsville Road lot. The building commissioner and the letters in the packet declined to find that they had not merged and indicated that we should seek variance relief from this board, which is the application that we've, we've submitted. Under the zoning variance test, as the board's fully aware, the three-pronged test, the board can grant a variance where there's unique conditions relating to, in this, in this instance, the shape of the lot. The shape of 1176 is unique in the sense that it's adjacent to and presumably merged with a larger Rounsville Road lot. It's, it's part of this, inadvertently, part of this larger subdivision. The, the second prong, if there's a literal enforcement of the bylaw, that there'd be a hardship. The hardship here is more in the financial side analysis. If, if these lots are deemed to be merged or variance relief is not granted, they can't be sold separately. Despite the fact that, as I indicated earlier, we believe they've maintained their separate identities to each other. They've always been separately taxed as separate parcels. And I think the third prong, more importantly, is you can grant this relief without creating any new non-conformities. We're not requesting any change in the shape of either lot. If they are separated, the purchaser of the Rounsville Road lot would not require any further zoning relief. It's fully conforming. It's an acre with sufficient frontage on Rounsville Road. The South Street lot, again, is in a neighborhood with similar 10,000 square foot lots. And the Rounsville Road lot likewise is in similar neighborhood with one acre lots with single-family homes on them. This is a pretty unique situation. There's only one other instance I can think of. There was a, before this board, Mr. Dugan, I don't, I think you might recall, you were, you were there at the time, of course. There was a lot on Troll Road and Mount, Mount Joy Drive.
Yeah, that was actually, just a few months ago.
It was a couple of years ago.
Yeah, a few months.
What's that?
Was it really a couple of years ago?
It was, yeah, it was 2014, I believe.
Jesus, feels like it was just yesterday.
So same thing. It was a small Troll Road lot and the owner had purchased one of the subdivision lots on Mount Joy Drive and that stayed vacant for some time. Again, very unique situation. Same here. You've got this undersized lot, which is conforming, but for being adjacent to a conforming lot, which is merged presumably under the law. I think the other thing to take into consideration, this is a situation where we're creating new non-conformities. I think that's important. Some of the, some of the case law that I've seen where this type of request is denied is where you've got two undersized lots when, when you're done splitting them again. So, you know, zoning always seeks to increase conformity. And so if we were, if we were looking to split these lots and create two non-conforming lots, I think it would be a different situation. Here, you've got an existing, but for the merger doctrine, an existing non-conforming grandfathered lot, which no changes will be made to that. And you have a fully conforming one acre lot by today's standards.
So I, I have a question.
Sure.
Why, I understand exactly what you're trying to do here. Why are we looking at 4130? What table of dimensional requirements? Because you've got a lot that was created in 1954 to 56, somewhere in there. 10,000 square feet, which was fine in 1954. So like you said, that's an existing non-conforming. And the other lot is an acre with 150 feet of frontage. And you're not looking to build anything on it. Why am I looking at the table of dimensional requirements?
Because if they're presumed to have merged and you're then granting variance relief to the smaller lot, you're in essence splitting it off. And by today's standards, the 1176 South Street would have to be one acre and 150 feet of frontage, which it doesn't. So the dimensional requirement table is, is why.
I think what's getting, is on Troll Road, we, we made, you know, any case like this, we made a determination of whether the lots were in fact merged. It wasn't, it wasn't a variance. It was, are they truly merged? Because if, if, if we determined that they were never merged, or they shouldn't have been merged, then you don't need anything.
Correct. And, and so you're aware, I did file at the same time as the variance application. I did file an appeal application of the building commissioner's letter, but I chose to just have the public hearing on the variance. In the event you granted the variance relief, the merger issue wouldn't need to be addressed.
Right, but how can we? How can we, how can we issue a variance on a lot that's one lot? You follow me? We, we need to make a determination of whether it's two lots or one lot. And I don't think you'd do that just by the 4130.
So the building commissioner actually referenced 4120?
Right, I see both of them. I'm just... I'm a little confused as to why we're going down this road, because if it... Because it... Sure.
Hang on, Jan, just let...
If... If, if we're looking at, at a variance, then that kind of leads to the assumption that it's two lots. And they're, they're saying, the town is saying that it's one lot. Well, if it's one lot, you don't need a variance. It's plenty big. You follow me, right?
I do, yeah. I guess the question was, which issue should you address first? The building commissioner's position is that she doesn't see that there's an exception to the merger doctrine. But indicated variance relief would, would solve the issue. So that's why I brought that forward first.
I just, I don't see how variance relief would solve that issue, because it's, the town is saying it's one lot. Right? They're saying it was merged and it's one lot. You're saying, and I'm not agreeing or disagreeing with the other side. The town is saying it's one lot. You're saying it's not one lot. It's Lot 53 and 54. It's two separate lots. It's been two separate lots its entire life. And now you're asking for a variance on what the town believes to be one lot for dimensional requirements. You, you don't need, you don't need a variance on dimensional requirements on your one lot. I, I'm just, I'm unclear.
I think it's, I'm sorry.
I, I'm just unclear if we're going down the right road here.
I mean, the plans in the town zoning map and assessor, everybody's indicating it and showing it as two lots. That's the, the way the plans show as they're recorded with the registry.
Right.
In other words, I don't need, I don't need a plan approved that puts that dividing line between the two parcels.
Right. Right, you're not moving a line, you're not, and you, it's clearly two separate lots. They've just combined them because you have an existing non-conforming next to a conforming. And if the same owner owns both, then they put them together and call it a conforming lot.
Right, they're deemed, they're, they're combined for, for the zoning analysis if you were to apply for permits and so forth. They are separate lots and it's... The issue comes when you go to sell.
Right.
You, you have a deed that conveys a portion of what's presumed to be one, one large lot.
Right, but like you said in your, in your opening there, you have two separate deeds.
Correct.
So it's not one deed. It's two deeds.
Right.
So has it ever been combined? I, I'm just, I don't know, I, I don't know if, if 4130 is the right thing to do. Because if they were never combined, I mean, I know you understand what I'm saying. If they were never combined, then you have two conforming lots. You have the, the small lot that was conforming, you know, prior to 1980, 1992, 10,000 square feet or less, so you're fine there. And then you, you're one that was in 1967. It's an acre with 150 feet of frontage. So you're fine there. So we basically need to make a determination if it's, is it one lot or two? So we basically need to make a determination if is is it one lot or two? I I just, I don't know. Any input?
Well, I mean, if you if you if you feel comfortable making that determination tonight, we
I I don't because that's not the way it was advertised. I can't, whether I feel comfortable or not. Because it's not advertised as that. And being a public hearing, we have to advertise.
A quick question?
Yes.
What what was the purpose? I I saw the building commissioner's letter, but what was the purpose of going to the building commissioner in the first place? Were you seeking a permit?
No, just a zoning determination under Section seven. If if the building commissioner agreed that there was no zoning violation potentially by selling one lot or selling the lots separately from each other, it it it's as soon as you sell the lots and can record a new deed for either parcel that it would trigger a zoning violation and both lots become problematic under one infects the other. You can't split. So but if there was a, if the building commissioner, who's the the enforcement officer, said, I agree that that they can be sold separately, then there's no issue.
Right, I I understand. I was just, when I I understood that asking for a variance, I was like, what are the specifics of the variance? There's nothing there. It's just
Right.
variance. Yeah.
I I I presume she viewed it as if eleven seventy-six were to be sold separately, that by today's standards, it's a non-conforming lot. And so the variance would effectively approve that that lot as an as it exists, it's a it's a smaller ten thousand square foot lot for which you you'd grant a variance from the one acre requirement. That's how I viewed it. Mister Chair, we could certainly, if 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 it's if it's the board's position to deal with the merger issue first, we could, I would ask to continue the hearing and I can give notice of the appeal hearing.
Yeah, I just
And have them both on at the same time.
I'm okay to do that. I just, I want to talk about this a little more, because I just like we were just saying, it it's, I'm reading the denial letter now. It's two lots are continuous and have merged. A variance would be required pri- prior to any building permit being issued. We're not looking for a building
You're not, right.
And you're not, if the two lots are merged, then it's one lot. You can't build two houses on it.
Well, I think that obviously the building permit references is is referring to Roundsville Road. So if you sold eleven seventy-six and sold Roundsville Road separately, you that the purchaser would would apply for a building permit, but Roundsville Road would be would be infected by the undersized South Street lot.
You'd have to sell both lots together.
Infectious invalidity would make them both invalid, so.
Right. So even if we gave you a variance on, and which lot would you be looking for a variance from, for? Roosevelt Road or the other one, South Street?
It would be, it would apply primarily to eleven seventy-six South Street.
Right, but according to the town, it's one lot. So eleven seventy-six and the no-name lot on Roosevelt Road are one lot. So what am I giving you a variance for? And again, I'm just, I'm just talking this out. I'm not
Yeah, here it's certainly not crystal clear. My my understanding is the variance is in order to allow South Street.
It doesn't make it two lots. It's still only one lot.
Again, I I this merger doctrine is you know, unique concept. They're they are two separate lots. They're not one unless unless you're unless you go to to sell or otherwise apply for permit and so forth.
So I'm reading, I I'm forty-one twenty-two, just forty-one twenty as well. Doesn't um doesn't really apply either, because if if you could get a determination that it was two lots, then you wouldn't be changing the size.
Correct.
You, so you wouldn't need that either. I think it's more I think it's more of a determination of whether it's one lot or two. And I I'm very willing to continue to next month to hash this out a bit more. I just, I I don't think a variance would do it for you.
Yeah, I mean, the only other option would be under forty-one twenty to change the shape of a lot, but I I think to your point, Mister Chairman, you're you're being asked to create two lots. Not change the shape of one, so.
Right.
I'm happy to, if 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 you're willing to continue the hearing tonight, I can I can have the appeal application advertised and noticed for next meeting as well as this this application, so they both both be available.
Yep, I I think that's the way to go. I think I think that's a very good idea.
All right.
And we'll be in person, so maybe we can get the town attorney out there, too.
That's right.
I don't know if you heard me say earlier, but we got an email stating that this will be our last virtual meeting.
So excited.
I am too. All right, so um did your client want to say something before we continue?
I think she does.
We just can't hear her. We can't hear her.
We can't hear you.
Okay, I'm on my phone and I'm in person.
He can hear you.
Hear me now.
Yes.
Okay, um yes. The configuration of the two lots. One of them, the one on Roundsville Road, is a different development. It's a circular road and the lots were cut into high-shaped pieces or a slice of pizza. Okay, it's triangular. Now, on the bottom right-hand corner, we have the little eleven seventy-six rectangle attached to the corner of the large forty thousand whatever acre, forty thousand square feet. Um, it doesn't configure into a lot. It's a triangle plus a little rectangle. And there is no way that I could sell that as a lot.
Thank you, I
Yeah, Jan, they're they're aware of that, yep.
Yeah, we we get it. We get it. And what we were discussing was it's, we've had a couple of these cases now, and we understand exactly what you're saying. And I just, I I don't think you you're looking for the right thing. So we're just going to expand on it a little bit. We'll come back again next month and do a little more work on it.
Okay, I I appreciate that.
All right. All right, so if somebody would like to make a motion to continue to our next month's hearing, which is June twenty-ninth.
I'd like to make a motion to continue Janice S. Harmon, air Paul K. Harmon to our next meeting of June twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-one.
At six-thirty.
At six-thirty.
Motion's been made.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, so you're continued to next month.
Great, thank you, Mister Chair.
Thank you. All right. What did I do with my agenda? Here it is. Any old business board members? Any new business? Sounds like we're going back, sounds like we're going back to Town Hall. That'll be nice.
Great.
Pretty excited.
I am.
My first one.
Get to see Ray all over again and meet Mike in person.
There you go.
Will it be your first one, Mike? Yeah.
Be my first one.
At Town Hall, yeah.
Yep.
It'll be like my ninety-seventh million one. All right. Yeah, if somebody'd like to make a motion to adjourn, if there's nothing further.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Uh, don't forget, hold on one second, the uh, the packet that we were just looking at. Don't lose that one.
No, we'll need it for next week, next month.
That's a nice one. Colored pages and everything.
I know, he did a good job.
Did a nice job. All right, um, motion to adjourn has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned. Enjoy the nice, long weekend.
You too. See you guys in a month.
See you in a month.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.